All right, five o'clock, we'll go ahead and call this New Orleans Dance the Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the May County Council meeting. The first piece of business we have up on the agenda, two sets of minutes here, guys. There's the ones from the April fifteenth meeting, and then there's the ones from the May sixth, joint council with the commissioners meeting, so we can take them separate or together, but we'll look for a motion to approve as long as nobody seems to change what they think needs to be made in the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve both of those.
All right, Dave Frome made a motion, we approved both sets of minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brian Grohl. Any further discussion here, board? Hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, just got that, taking care of. Next up is additional, and these have all been advertised. So first up is the judge with some requests here for pegged jewelry referee salary, psychiatric services, lodging and mealings, video conference equipment, they're listed in here in your packet. Judge?
Yes, which one you want to start with?
Whatever you want, whatever you want to talk about.
I'll work down a list. Psychiatric services, we requested ten thousand dollars additional. Just a kind of a reminder on these, we never know how many are going to be requested or for any year. We are required to provide a mental health evaluation for someone who is deemed incompetent or is mentally ill, cannot understand criminal proceedings especially. So out of the ten thousand, we're already, I think, two thousand in the hole, which leaves us eight thousand for the rest of the year. If you want to cut some of that, that's fine, I may have to come back, but that's the request. Tyrrell's charges us about one forty for our, we call it the quick reviews. We have someone that comes to jail, they follow law enforcement, they're not functioning well. Tyrrell will go over the cheaper review for us. The doctor reviews are fifteen hundred to forty-five hundred dollars each, and so it's quite expensive. And it used to be we had to have two per request, but now on Essex felony, we can get by with one per request. It changed a lot on that because this is an issue for counties everywhere, it's so expensive. But on the higher level felonies, we still have to have two evaluations before there could be a finding of incompetence. So answer any questions you have on that, just kind of give you a little background there.
All right, guys, any question for the judge on this one? Now I'll look for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve there.
All right, Steve made a motion to approve the ten thousand. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Justin Gross. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Then video conference internet, I think we asked for two hundred dollars. You approved this for eighteen hundred, the bill came in at two thousand, so we're just two hundred dollars short on that line.
All right, guys, two hundred dollars for video conferencing for the judge. Put on, bring the inmates into jail over here.
I'm hoping we approve the two hundred dollars.
Dave makes a motion to approve the two hundred. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Brian Grohl seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll take up the two copiers. Our copier is ten years old plus, they notified us last year, they quit making the parts for it. They were not going to be able to keep us under warranty, the toner and all that. So we started watching, HBM gave us a great end of year quote, four thousand nine hundred twenty-seven dollars for a color copier. It's actually a seventeen thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollar copier. So with our trade-in, we got it for less than five thousand dollars. So I think we did share that with Melissa, and I think some of the other officers were trying to take advantage of that too, because you never find a copier like that. They're like cars now, they're really nice copiers. So I'm requesting the one for the court office, and then one for probation. Probation will come out of user fees, so the offenders paid for that one. But the forty-nine twenty-seven oh six are, I think, five thousand, so out of the court office would be out of county.
All right, guys, judge got a request for five thousand for a copying machine. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Susan makes a motion to have a second.
Second.
Dave Frome seconds. Any further discussion or question for the judge? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
And then just so I'm clear on that, does that cover one for the court office and one for probation?
No, I think we actually, I think we actually had the one back here on Trent for the other one.
Yeah, it could be, it's out of probation fees, so it's kind of out of general.
Yes, we got it, we got it, and we'll do it here, they're transferred. We actually have that in the transfers. We're transferring from one thing to the next.
Thank you. And then also on juror fees, we've had two extensive jury trials already this year. So again, we never know how many jury fees we're going to need some years, we don't need any, other than what's been budgeted this year. I'm asking for an additional fifteen thousand, we're already, we've eaten up thirteen thousand five hundred of that. So even if you approve this, we're going to have fifteen hundred left for the next jury trials for the year. We'll just see what's going to happen there. And then on food, which is kind of right along with that for the jurors, three thousand's the request, we're seventeen hundred in the hole, which leaves us with thirteen hundred for the next trial. So that kind of gives you a background. Just a quick reminder on that, we're required by law to pay jurors who are not selected thirty dollars for every day when they come to the courthouse. Jurors that are selected deserve, we have to pay them eighty dollars per day. We also pay forty-nine cents mileage. If someone is selected on the jury, we actually provide their food at lunch. And then if we go late into the evenings, like in the last trial, we had a deliberation that went to like two in the morning, we provide pizza and things like that. Got to give, we got to feed our jurors. It's people from the county that are coming in to hear our cases, so yeah, it's costly, but it is, I don't see any way around it.
Okay, we got a question, those two up at the top, guys, ten thousand, five thousand. Total fifteen thousand for juror pay and three thousand for food. We'll take those together for the total of eighteen thousand. Do I have a motion to approve those three?
I'll approve those three.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Steve Hoff seconds. Any other discussion, question for the judge? Hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, then, it's the only thing I've got left is the referee's salary.
So if you recall, the court had budgeted the full referee's salary. He is full-time and he's one thirty-seven, six thirty-four, seventy-five. I think that's what you all put on the salary ordinance. You funded eighty-nine thousand, I think, out of county general, and I think we were all hoping the legislature was going to approve the magistrate, which actually pays even more than what our referee gets paid. But they did not fund us this year. So there is a shortfall of forty-eight thousand, six thirty-four, seventy-five. Last year, I think, we took care of that out of probation fees. I think we made the request out of county general, but I'll hear you on that. But certainly, he would be getting paid the same thing as the chief deputy prosecutor in Spencer County, which is a very fair comparison, because referee fully does a lot of the work in the court. And he's actually in the hospital right now, been there for about a week, so he's having a rough time right now. We expect him to bounce back here next week hopefully, so.
Good health.
Don't worry about that.
The, I mean, here while I was thinking, we could pay it out of here, this time it's already advertised, take care of it. Then next year, that money's building, we can pay him out of the other one, we need to next year. Or if you want to, if you want to, like, or I guess not when you want to, when, you know, I guess they have this summer session on this, right, Judge? And that's where we talk to them.
Yes.
Let us know, and maybe two or three of us can go up there, meet you up there. Or we'll go up there, and we can maybe help you lobby these people to get this where they'll take care of it next year.
Okay, they actually ended up cutting judges this year from other counties that didn't even go up to the session. So it was not a good year, so.
Well, he's tired.
So you're thinking next year's not looking good.
I don't know.
When do they meet on that, that summer session?
I think they do, they do every other year, but I think it is smart for us to start this next year again. So start working with our legislators and getting that done. But they only allow one person to speak per county, so, but it doesn't hurt for you all to be talking to people behind the scenes, obviously.
Right.
I mean, we're basically being punished because we're financially silent, we can afford to do it ourselves.
That was kind of the gist of what I got from this.
That's kind of the gist of what I got.
If we were broke and didn't have any money, and our court system was in disarray, because we can't get stuff done, then, you know, then maybe they would fund it, but the way we are, that's whatever.
I may have stepped on a few toes, because I found it interesting that Carmel gets three new judges. And that's a county that can stand on her own at any time, they can compete with anybody financially. It's kind of a little bit of interesting, I think, but the, don't write this here either. The chairman of that committee was.
They got a lot more letters from Carmel.
Probably six hundred dollars in that county. That's a fast growing county.
All right, guys, we got the request here from the judge to, for the rest of the police thing. So, you know, I always look at this, having a second judge myself, as a good investment, is that we can keep them out of the jail. Not responsible to all their healthcare and all their, take care of them, and we can make room there. So Tom allows the judge to take care of a lot of other things and get these people through here faster, so.
Sheriff's been great at working with us, and Stella at the jail been great at working with us on keeping our numbers down. Sylvia had community corrections, so we really, I think, have kept our jail numbers down. I know we have compared to where it used to be, and that's a direct reflection on being able to get people into court, get things done.
Were there any local representatives on that committee?
No, not on my, nobody south of Wilmington, I don't think.
Yeah. All right, guys, do we have a motion to approve the forty-eight thousand, six thirty-five for the remainder of the year for Tom Bulley's salary?
I'll make that motion.
Brian makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Frome. Any further discussion or question for the judge? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, get Tom back to work.
Yeah, I'm hoping it's some good news, but keep giving me your prayers, that's for sure.
All right, all right, we will, Judge.
Did you really stick around for that transfer?
Nope.
No.
All right.
Go home, beat the rain on them.
Yeah, I hope you all agree to.
Thank you. All right, moving on down here, guys, next thing up here is the repair for Stephanie's car that we talked about last month, for fifty-six hundred dollars, we advertised it, just need a motion to approve the fifty-six hundred dollars.
Make a motion.
Justin makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Susan Harris seconds. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, just good, office equipment, we discussed this last month here for the community corrections. It's been advertised, just need a motion to approve the eighty-eight fifty-six.
I'll make that motion.
All right, Brian made that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, second by Steve Hoff. Any other discussions, questions for Sylvia? Hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, again, same way it's been advertised, discussed, sheriff's AEDs for the sheriff's car, so we can get those on all the cars. Sixteen thousand out of opiate fund here, grant, so we've got sixteen thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars. Look for a motion to approve that.
Motion.
Dave Frome, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Justin Gross, second.
This past week, lady down at the payment bill went into car rehab for rest, and they really feel like she was safe because one of the deputies got there first, and they were working on it.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. All right, thank you, Steve for that. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving back here to the next, to the transfers. We've got, these are all ready to go, guys. The sheriff would like to increase fifteen thousand for overtime, decrease fifteen thousand out of the E nine one-one service contract. Sheriff's here, anybody got any questions for her?
How are we looking on, are we fully staffed yet, on deputies or?
On deputies, we are, we were fully staffed, we have to fill the last position, the back still for the SRO, so technically we went down. But yeah, otherwise we have twenty. So, and then dispatchers, we have, one of the dispatchers we're hiring into the deputy position, so we're going to be doing dispatcher interviews.
All right, thank you, Sheriff. All right, any other discussion?
Did that get missed in a budget, this contract that we didn't fund it, the nine one one contract?
No, it, well, we had, I believe we were, I think she allocated fifteen thousand, and we were down to two thousand. I think she's used thirteen, and so this comes out of the twelve twenty-two fund.
So we put the money from the SRO officer in the overtime, right, a while back, remember?
We put the SRO for the overtime in the first semester.
And now we need another fifteen for overtime, we're burning up a lot of overtime then, aren't we?
Well, this fifteen thousand is for the dispatcher's nine one one account.
For the, for the nine one one, not the deputies?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is the dispatcher overtime, this is.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, okay, gotcha.
All right, any other questions? All right, now I'll look for a motion to approve the fifteen thousand dollar transfer.
I'll make the motion.
Susan makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Brian Grohl, seconds. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Excuse me, any, anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, guys, then we got a, we're going to increase sheriff's vehicles, and we are going to decrease vehicle maintenance repair by ten thousand dollars. You can read the description in here, this is from, we had a, I think this is an insurance money, right, Sheriff? We had a wrecked car, and we put the, they put the check into the vehicle maintenance thing, and we've wrecked a couple more cars, so we're in a position where we're going to have to buy a car, because we don't have enough, correct? So we're transferring this money over to, to help pay for the car. I don't know if you want to elaborate on that any, or what's your thinking?
Yeah, we had, we had two vehicles unfortunately that were totaled, and so the ten thousand, the vehicle amount would have been, value would have been fifteen thousand, but with our five thousand deductible. So that ten thousand was put into the vehicle repairs. Vehicle repairs account is pretty healthy. Unfortunately, now, we had another accident where we totaled another vehicle recently. It's rep, I thought it would be a ten thousand dollar reimbursement, same year it had been lowered, it's a little less. But we're hoping to kind of bring those money to the other one account. We have found a used vehicle, it's a twenty twenty-two Durango for, or twenty twenty-three Durango, I believe. Anyway, it's got thirty thousand miles on it, and the price they have on it is twenty-nine thousand. So with the two wrecked vehicles, if we can purchase one used vehicle, it's lower than the price. It already has the lights and everything in it, we just got a big radar, it's a radio's over. So that's what we're hoping, and that would be the additional that's attached to the center plus as well as well.
Okay, guys, there's the sheriff's thing, so need questions for, or if not, I'll look for a motion to approve the transfer?
I'll make that later, I'll approve the ten thousand.
All right, Brian made a motion to approve the transfer for ten thousand. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Dave Frome, seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, got it. All right, guys, this is what the judge was talking about here. The next two are two, for Hoosier Business Energy, one's the copier, and then the other one is to get a whole punch, whole punch printer finisher from Hoosier Business Machine, so.
The fifteen seventy-four is rostered here.
Yeah, well, we got, she got two of them there, the two add up to what she needs, so. But the one's out of the two thousand probation user fund here, so the, we'll take them separate here. So this is for the copying machine. We need to increase capital out equipment and decrease adult probation fund by forty-nine twenty-seven oh six.
I'll make that motion.
Justin makes that motion, so I have a second.
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Dave, the next one is to, for the finish, the copier, the rest of what they own, the copier and the toning and maintenance contract is what it is, the second transfer. So the two add up to what they need to spend. So the, we'll need to take the, do the thing in here, and so increase capital outlay and then decrease office supplies by fifteen hundred seventy-four dollars. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion for the fifteen seventy-four.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Susan Harris, seconds. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up here. We kind of discussed, Sheriff, do you have anything you want to talk about besides your car here tonight?
Um, we have just, we had the jail inspection.
Oh, yeah.
So we have the annual jail inspection, we don't have to report it yet back. But one of the things we did was discover is, we've always been an eighty-two bed facility, and because they no longer let us count for beds that we use for patients have medical issues and different things, they're now moving us to a seventy, so they consider us a seventy-eight bed facility, because we have to be padded, medical, things like that separate. That takes our eighty percent level down to sixty-two beds. And so DOC looks at us that we're full if we have eighty percent of the beds full, because you can't house women with men, you can't house certain men with other men, things like that. So we're down to sixty-two beds. As of today, we have seventy-one people in jail, so we would be considered over populated in our jail, so just, just to hurt them. They noted to get on the inspection about the storage issues, but it is unfortunately, the building's what it is, and we don't have any room for storage, so. But Stella did a great job, you rave about how great she did the facility, and did everything clean and all of that. There are some repairs we need to do, we have, the jail showers have leached through one of the concrete walls, so we have two cells we can't use because of mold issues and water running through. It's just thirty-some and a year, some odd years of the concrete walls that went through. So we have some things that we need to look at, so, but they were happy with what she had on her records and inspections and everything.
Correct. They're going to try to drive them out and seal them off, or what's the plan?
One of the suggestions was to seal them with like stainless steel, and then put a, like a kick out at the bottom and then pop them in, and that would be one of the suggestions that was given to us on all three of the walls around, and that would hopefully keep the water going where it needs to go instead of into the walls. So that's what we had a bill, like estimate grant here for now.
Okay, well, just keep us up to date on what we, what we need to do here, so, and we'll do it. All right, thank you, Sheriff. All right, next up, we have the annual appropriations of what the Spencer County Substance Abuse Council, the drug money, kind of how it's broke down and how it's going to be granted to the community, and they just need our blessing on the budget for the year, and yeah, whatever else you'd like to add.
Yeah, if you guys don't have any questions.
All right, anybody have any questions? If not, we'll need a motion to approve the Spencer County Substance Abuse Council budget.
How's the number compare, is the number higher or lower than yours, or pretty steady?
The number, the amount is low.
Lower than it hasn't been?
Yes.
I'm hoping we approve the breakdown on the drug-free fund money granted to the community.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Susan, seconds. Any other discussion? Do you know, do you, younger guys know how this money comes around? Okay, all right, all right, hearing no other questions, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion approved. Need me to sign?
No, this is for the claims.
Okay, thank you, thanks for coming. All right, guys, the next thing that we got up here under new business is the SB one for Saturday and gas and electric from, or Center Point, whatever, I don't, however you want to say it. The, and we just need to approve this here, again, it's in the very back of your book. This is from the Troy Solar Project. You know, when they came, they estimated that would be a fifty million dollar project. It actually turned out to be a ninety-seven million dollar project after depreciation. It's about a nineteen, eighteen and a half million dollar thing, and the salaries associated with that project come in at two hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the people that are, they got two point eight, or two point five people associated with that thing that they're paying to do whatever they do with that, even though they're not there every day, so.
They estimated one, and we got two point five eight. I mean, they estimated one, and we got two point five eight.
Two point five eight and then two hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of salary. So they have met their requirements, in my opinion, very easily for this, so. I just need a motion to approve their CF one form as presented.
I'll make that motion to approve the CF one for the Troy Solar Project.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Dave goes, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right. Legal report?
I missed mine.
Okay, thank you. Old business? All right, and then the other thing under new business here is, I'll turn it over to Dale Kenny. This, we might have to share these, or Melissa's going to go get some things. Mark Loebner called me earlier on this today, and then I called him back just a minute ago. So the generator that runs the garage during storms, and also runs our fuel tanks, and Dale, you can.
Yeah, all three are on road, all pro, and then the gas, and that's not just for the highway department, that is for sheriff's department, EMA, and EMS, and ambulance service, everybody gets the fuel there. And then the generator also powers our building, truck armor and all of that. We can not get parts for the generator that is there now, it's a nineteen eighty-five month. And so we were looking at seeing by getting a new generator for everybody. Because it's going to be, it's going to be for everyone, for the county, especially when we have a storm like we're having, something fire goes out, and they're having a hard time getting fuel, and ambulance service, they can't get fuel, and it's just a pain, so.
All right, so we've got a quote here for, I mean, we just have to advertise this.
Is this what you were talking about, you can only get one quote?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, and then.
For eighty-three thousand three hundred.
That was a lot, yes, sir.
So we have to figure out where we want to take this money, money out, and advertise it, and then we vote on it, you know, obviously, next month. So. What's everybody's thoughts?
What was the reason behind all having one quote?
Mark reached out to the other ones, and nobody, they're not responsible.
Oh, okay, so we actually, at least we did do a deal, reached out.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Had this place out, put a bill, uh, that goes, oh, wait. B and G couldn't be reached out.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure, uh, I'm not sure.
Okay.
All right, what do y'all, what do y'all think, y'all? Do we want to pursue this, um, figure out where we advertise it, or do we, uh, go without a generator?
I don't think we should go without generator.
Let me go ahead and advertise, advertise, but I would like to maybe reach out to more people, and if it comes up, this number's lowest than we're set, if it comes back lesser than that, we'll know, but.
Who else, you know who else to reach out to?
I'm not exactly sure.
Who, who did?
Diane Brothers and then, um, the group out of, uh, Tail City, um.
Hello?
Yes, Casey, um, I'm not sure who else it was.
Who, who did it? Mark?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm gonna mention to Mark about, uh, B and G or U K.
Get right, yeah, that's fine.
Or, or, or fuck, I got theirs, bro.
They, they're, they're reputable also. Um, we used, uh, a VAPR, uh, still. They're, they're generat, but.
Yeah, the color is B and G and, uh.
And right now, we have a generator and we can, we can run because B M A, they, they let us borrow their cat generator, it's, of course.
For the one.
Service, that's.
All right, next question, where do y'all want to advertise this out of?
Which one of the two, either the eleven seventy-three or eleven seventy-six, which one can we use for something like this? The one has to be just for ro- for paving and stuff, right, and gravel?
I, I'm wanting to say eleven seventy-six is the one that you put paving and gravel.
That's okay. Then we can take it out of eleven seventy-three. Always forget which one it is.
Which is. Now, I could write, I could tell you how, guess which.
Eleven seventy-three says restricted. Eleven seventy-six just says more people highways, I thought maybe the eleven seventy-three was the one that only, you could only do paving and stuff out. Two million dollars in the one and about a million one in the other.
Looks like to me.
Restricted one, eleven seventy.
Eleven seventy-six is what we need to advertise out of, Dave.
Okay, that's.
That's the one, uh, the, we need to advertise it out of the, the, uh, equip, hold on, let me get back to that page, but it's, that's the one that's got the equipment in it, so we need to advertise it out of, um, eleven seventy-six, forty-five, one hundred, equipment.
And I do have on that equipment, we had two hundred and twenty-five thousand for the budget. I do have a tractor, kind of brush that'll come to brand new in here in June for, it's gonna be about two hundred and eleven thousand.
So, just advertise this out of there and then, once we get some money, we'll take it, we can, we can hold it and sign.
Okay.
So, all right, uh, we need a motion to advertise, uh, let's, uh. Just call eighty-four thousand out of the, uh, eleven seventy-six account.
I'll make that motion.
All right, I got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Steve Paul seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none, everybody in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll get her advertised here.
No, we need, no. I'd like your idea, we, I, I'll make a motion that we look for some more bids here.
I'm not gonna sign off. I'm gonna send Mark that B and G.
I'm not going to put one bid. There's gotta be some other people out there to do this.
How long will it take to get this, if, like, if you went with this?
I'm not exactly sure on that, and Mark knows more of the details of that. I apologize.
Yeah, we'll, we'll reach out to Mark.
Three months, three months out, lead time for a generator.
It's not like we're completely handicapped, we just got.
We're, we're, we're good right now.
The one we got is pretty reliable, I think, if I write it.
Yes, sir.
I'm on a bid, bought one for the house and made a down payment on it, and it's been at least three months and they still don't have it.
I, I got, I got it.
They might have a hard time getting it, if it's a gen- there's a generator.
Yeah, well.
There, I mean, yeah.
We need to do it sooner than later because if they need a generator, then somebody else in the county also is gonna need it for, for an emergency, they're gonna need somewhere else.
Yeah.
Yeah, it needs to happen sooner than later.
Okay, all right, we'll take care of that next month, we'll, we'll follow with Mark out there to get a couple more quotes.
Okay, and I'll, I'll talk to Mark in a while if I come.
Okay.
Um, I have one more, I, um, just for Hume Bridge, uh, contractual services, I was requesting a hundred thousand dollars to, uh, have maintenance, uh, repair, uh, on some of the bridges per United Consulting or, uh, bridge contractor. Um, they, I don't know if you all have a sheet or not, with, with you that shows all the repairs that they have, uh, mentioned here to do, concrete work, uh, rip wrapped, several things. But, um, I'm just requesting the hundred thousand dollars for the contractual service because I'm actually adding down to fifteen hundred, uh, we just got a bid for a new bridge at County Road, uh, two hundred north, in Bull County Road, for two hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred dollars, and I had two hundred and seventy-five in contractual service, so.
Okay, I'll move that we advertise a hundred thousand out of eleven thirty-five Hume Bridge for next month.
All right, Dave, is there any motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any other questions for Dale? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor of advertising a hundred thousand on the Hume Bridge? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I drove across that bridge the other day.
Thank y'all. It's, uh, the footer of the.
Hey, Dale?
Sorry, John Derry sixty-one, forty-five.
Dale, can you get, leave that with Melissa or can, can, we make a copy?
I don't have that.
Okay, yeah, we made a copy, so. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome. You can just leave it or we can, you want us, any, any. All right, hold on, back to the. Oh, we need to advertise this.
Yes.
All right, guys, there's one last thing in here for the sheriff. I think she's wanting to talk to us about advertising some money, uh, for additional for the rest of that car.
Right, so with the insurance, uh, some of us, we should have ten thousand and ten thousand, which is twenty. The, uh, price of the car, it, ballpark is twenty-nine thousand is what it's gonna be, so I was gonna ask for an advertisement for either ten thousand, what I put in the additional, or if you wanted to do nine thousand, that's fine. But, they have, um, two cars available, they'll have three more available, but they're saying the price ranges between the twenty-nine and thirty thousand. So, so there are additional, that additional, um, amount of money.
We've been doing those out of Hume Capital, but I don't think there's, there's not enough, uh, I don't think there's enough money to, to work our line.
It's in the black, it's in the red.
Yeah.
It's in the negative.
Yeah.
Do we get the tax, I don't know.
Right, so we're gonna, we're gonna take out a county general, I would guess. Unless, uh. Can you pay for that of a, um, probation user?
Money?
In this word.
It's not, it's not a county general thing.
No, we'll just take it out of there. We could take it out of the lit portion of county general, you know, like we do with the equipment. I don't know if you call it infrastructure or not. Our county general, I don't care.
I don't care, but, uh, can you just cover?
Whatever you guys think.
All right, guys, where you, where do y'all want to advertise this? Ten thousand, uh, we could, uh, hold on just real quick.
It can be four should have, that we have more choices. Some counties have no choice, or just one choice.
I mean, I.
I would recommend county gen.
I'd put it on county general, put it on, and pu- and just put in other equipment. Where it is, that's stupid question.
So, like the zero, zero, zero five, or state county?
Well, yeah, county gen- county general, Sheriff's Department, so one oh five.
Go fuck.
Forty-five one hundred, equipment.
Got you.
Advertising ten thousand dollars. All right, guys, we're gonna put that under the, uh, Sheriff's Department there, under, um, equipment, ten thousand dollars.
Do we need a motion?
Yes. Make a motion to advertise that, yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, Dave Froming made a motion to advertise that.
I'll second.
Just a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, everybody in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, guys, that's all I got. Any other business? All right, I'm gonna look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Brian makes that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Susan seconds, everybody in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're done.